And we should be all set.
Okay, great. Okay, good evening. I'm calling this public hearing to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and GLC. One thirty-one, section forty, and the Boston Wetlands ordinance, Boston City Code ordinances, chapter seven dash one point four. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on March twentieth, twenty twenty-four to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land-occupying shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's public hearing will be followed by our regular meeting in accordance with chapter one oh seven of the Acts of twenty twenty-two. We're conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions during the public hearing. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself and or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. For the record, my name is Michael Parker. Could staff please identify themselves?
Eleanor Intimary with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Hey, I'll call the role of the commissioners present this evening. Commissioner Long?
Nick Long.
Commissioner Conan?
Conan DeWingard.
You, Commissioner Richmond? I know she's there somewhere. We can see her. Let the record reflect Commissioner Richmond is with us. Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Great, okay. We don't have any active.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. My, I was on mute. Alice Richmond, I apologize.
No need to apologize. Okay, we don't have any active NOIs this evening. I think that's a first since I've been on the commission. But there have been a number of continuances, continued our notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one seven zero four in Boston, file number twenty twenty dash zero zero seven, notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven two in Boston, file number twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero, and notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine six one in Boston, file number twenty twenty-three dash zero five one. That being said, we will now begin our regular meeting. First item on the agenda for the regular meeting is a request for a partial certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one eight nine six for the renovation of an existing single-family dwelling and associated parking drainage improvements located at Five Rice Street in Dorchester. The resource area is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Eleanor?
Yes, and Chair Parker, I'll be, yeah, I'll be presenting this. So staff conducted a site visit on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and there are photos in the drive folder for the commission's review. The applicant is requesting a partial COC because the landscaping is incomplete, but the rest of the work on this property under their permit has been completed. And based on that, staff would recommend issuing a partial certificate of compliance for the work.
Great, thank you. Any questions for any of the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to issue a partial certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one eight nine six.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Hi.
Commissioner Conan?
Hi.
Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I vote I. I have a new computer. It's, you know, it and I are becoming acquainted. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Herbst?
I.
My vote I, so that carries two, four, five, five, nothing. Okay, next item on the agenda are administrative updates. Eleanor?
Our first administrative update is regarding an enforcement order that we had shared with the commission and the commission had ratified previously. Just as a reminder, this is for the burying of wood planks along the Mother Brook Bank at one sixty-one Reservation Road in Hyde Park. Staff conducted site visits in both October twenty twenty-three and February twenty twenty-four. We sent an enforcement order on November ninth, twenty twenty-three. It had the incorrect address, so we worked to find the correct contact information and resent the enforcement order on March first, twenty twenty-four. We've now requested that the property manager, who I believe is on the call with us, attend this hearing to discuss the violation and to also work with the commission to determine appropriate restorative actions and a, a, a plan the commission would like to see for this, given the work.
Okay. Um. How do you want to proceed? Just have a discussion on what we're looking for here?
I was, yeah, I think that that would be helpful. I think just right off the bat, maybe if, if any of the commissioners have any questions about what we saw on the site visit, what was included in the enforcement order, we can clarify that first and then maybe move into explaining. I believe Ali is on the call with us, so working with him to determine an appropriate plan of action to remove the planks and restore the bank.
Okay, okay, sounds good. So, um. When was the enforcement order issued again, when it got to the right address?
So when it got to the, we sent it, the, we sent it to the right address on March first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, okay, so just basically two, two and a half weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago now.
Pretty recently, yeah.
Okay, um, and when did, when were you contacted by the property manager?
Ali, I believe you reached out fairly soon after, um, after you had received the enforcement order. I'm trying to remember. I know it was a phone call. It may have not been an email, so let me see. See, it looks like, uh, I believe on the twelfth was when we had spoken on the phone for the first time.
Sounds about right.
Okay, okay, so Ali, um, so you received the enforcement order. And I think now, if you weren't aware before, you realize that you're working me within at least a buffer zone to a resource area. And I think from what Eleanor told me, you said that you put the planks there or buried the planks because you were stabilizing the bank? Did I get that right?
Uh, one reason why the owner started to strengthen the bank was because the trees were falling down as the river was eroding underneath the trees. So we didn't want to see the trees fall into the river. Plus, it was also eroding our property coming under our asphalt and, you know, possibly, you know, long-term undermining the, the park to access to the building.
Okay, okay, so when you're performing work like that, you need to file for what's called an order of conditions, basically a permit from the Conservation Commission. And what we would do is approve your soil erosion techniques in the work that you need to do or that you're proposing to do, and we would impose conditions on that work to make sure that it's done correctly. Generally, when someone is in the position that you're in, a wetlands consultant is hired to help prepare the application, which is called the notice of intent for our hearing. Have you engaged an environmental consultant yet or a wetlands consultant yet?
No.
Okay, okay. Unless you have some sort of extraordinary specialized expertise and I'm not trying to be snide here, judging with the work that you've done, I'm not completely sure you understand, you know, the means and methods to do this type of work. It's actually, and that's not casting aspersions on you. It's actually a bit tricky and delicate areas. So if you, I don't know, Eleanor, do you have a roster of consultants that you give out? Do, do, have you had a situation where you've been asked for?
So my, yeah, my understanding is that the city can't provide a recommendation for a list of consultants, but what we might be able, I think that we might have an organization that we know of that might be able to then assist with that. So I need to check back in internally. I think someone in our department had mentioned that at some point, so that might be a good reference point. So I think we can't directly provide recommendations on that, but we can at least guide in the right direction. And we also have materials put together on, on what the process is like, and we would be here also to, to assist in any way possible and answer any questions because it's not always the most intuitive process.
Okay, and Ali, you could also look through the minutes of, let's say, the last three or four or five meetings. And you can see, you know, a lot of the same consultants come before us. And, you know, you might be able to do some due diligence and make a, make a decision that way. But for the interest of moving this forward, Eleanor, as far as the enforcement order, are there any timeframes in there? They're, they're going to have to file an NOI. And I think, Ali, Eleanor has given you warning, you shouldn't remove these planks now because removing them could make matters worse. And it's also a situation where, as we said before, you'd be doing work and you need a permit to do work. So now that they're there, you know, you're going to have to get with wetlands consultant to develop a plan to remove the planks and put in proper erosion controls. So Eleanor, in the enforcement order, what?
Yeah, in the enforcement order, we identified April first as the date that a restoration plan would need to be filed with the issuing authority. I think that as, I mean, we as staff would be willing to, to work with that. And, and if by the first we have clear evidence that a plan is in the works, like we understand that it might take slightly more time than that, but, um, but some sort of confirmation by April first that a restoration plan is, is going to be coming our way and that an NOI is being prepared. I think that that would be an appropriate timeline.
What's the filing date for the first meeting after the first?
The filing deadline, so we have a filing deadline, see, not the fifth, but we do have a filing deadline on April twelfth. That would be the first April filing deadline.
April twelfth, I think, you know, I don't know if that's going to be possible. So Ali, what we're talking about here is you need to get someone on board to start to put together the restoration plan. And once that's put, put in place or drafted, then you're going to have to file to be heard by the commission. So we have filing dates. It might be, I, I think Eleanor, what you're saying makes perfect sense. We would want to know, you need to let Eleanor know by April first that you have someone in place and that some action is being taken and then give her an idea of when you're going to be able to file. April twelfth might be ambitious, but we'd want to see you, if not, if we want to see an application, if not April twelfth, then the following filing deadline, which I'm not looking at right now, but Eleanor can help you with that.
If I may, can I ask a few questions so I'm clear on a few things?
Sure.
Oh. So regarding the river, we were always under the impression that, you know, even though the river itself is public, their city property, that we do maintain the, or what's on our property as well. Does the city maintain the river? I'm asked because in the river itself, there are many trees falling into the river and very, very overgrown in the river itself. And I've been working for the, this property owner for many years, and I've never seen anyone maintaining the river. Or is, or is this, or is the river meant to just be left alone and whatever erodes or falls is accepted?
Okay. So, yeah, just to go back a little bit. This is more about what you're doing and not about what the city may or may not be doing in the river. Generally, the river, you know, we allow to stay in its natural state. But, you know, what, what we're focused on here today, and I hope that you're going to be focused on, is your work and how you're going to reach compliance here. So.
Now, one question I have is that assumption was made that this wood is treated, treated wood. Is if the, what, what, what's meant by treated wood, if I may ask?
Okay, Eleanor, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, so based on our initial site visits, we saw the wood and it looked as though it had been treated with either like some sort of surfacing material or it, it, it looked as though it wasn't left in its, I guess, natural state after being cut into planks. And so that was, that was an assumption that we made based on the observations that we made during our site visit. But, um, that, yeah, I understand through our conversations that it was kiln, kiln-dried wood. Was that right?
Yeah, so it's very likely that what's considered buried, or at least what's there, because there's two types of wood that's there. Some of it's just storage. We have tenants there that rent the property that, you know, just put wood outside, right, that's on top of the, what's, what's there, just as storage. And, yeah, there's some that's embedded, but it's very possible that what's embedded is kiln-dried wood without any treatment. I don't remember putting, or the owner putting any wood there that was painted. I could be wrong. But some of the wood, when on top was painted, I, I, that I do remember, but that wasn't there as part of this attempt to prevent the erosion. That wasn't part of the work. That wasn't, so is there, what I'm really driving at, is there a way to verify that what's there is in fact dangerous to the environment?
Yeah, doesn't, at this point, yeah, when you get a consultant on board and you do your investigation here and give us, be asking those questions, so you're going to need to provide us with those answers. Regardless of whether the wood is treated or not treated, you altered a wetlands resource area. So the fact of altering it, again, whether it be treated, untreated wood, is what has put you into a violation here.
Okay, and the other question I have, and this is just from my knowledge, I do have to tell this to the owner for him to take action. What is the penalty for assuming that the owner does nothing to say about this? And so he just leaves it. What, what's the penalty or the procedure after that?
Yeah, um, that's a very interesting question. We don't usually get a question about what if I do nothing?
I just asked.
Yeah, yeah, well, um, yeah, it's, to me, that's not like the best question to be asking us. But that being said, then we refer it to the legal department and they will decide what to do.
I just need to tell the owner that, because he's, he's going to ask me like, okay, what if I do not? I agree, there should be something done. I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we don't or we don't want to. I'm just saying, owner just needs to know what is, what are the options? And you, and me knowing him for many years, he does ask, you know, wants to even know the negative options.
Doing nothing's not an option.
Understood.
Okay, I'm going to go around to the commissioners now, see if anybody has any comments. Commissioner Long?
Um, no, no real comments here, except, you know, it's, it's pretty visible from the photo how the erosive force of the river on the bank here. So, um, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing what a restoration plan would look like for this area. And that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Conan?
I'm wondering if the erosion is like a chronic thing or an acute thing, if the staff get a, got a sense of that?
Uh, we're not a hundred percent sure because we haven't been monitoring in that way. I think my understanding is that just with the amount of, of storms that we've been getting lately, there may have been more water flowage through the area as of late. But we can't say that for sure, but it is something I think that would be interesting to kind of keep an eye on in the future.
Is there any, how would do we keep an eye on something?
Honestly, probably asking partners who are more active in the area. I'm thinking maybe like various watershed associations, things like this. I think they probably have a better sense of the exact flowage rates of, of different rivers and brooks in the area more so than, than we necessarily would.
Thank you. So in this case, we, the Nippon City River, what is your association?
Probably, yeah, that, I, I, that would have been my first stop to, to see what, you know, what they've observed in the last few years.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Herbst?
Uh, no questions. I just want to underline the, the need to get going on restoration and, and I, I, I think it's actually in your, the owner's interest as well, because I, this isn't, I don't think what we're seeing is going to serve much of a long-term purpose. So it's, it's both a violation issue and I, I think a practical one for you to have expertise on, on how one can appropriately protect the bank. Thanks.
Okay, okay, um, so Ali, I think, um, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, just, just to confirm that, that the violation is just to restore the bank to its original state without the planks there. It's not to set up something new. If I did, doing something new, like a new wall or a different type of attempt at rendering erosion as something separate and extra from, from this violation.
Yeah, so the violation technically is your alteration of a resource area without a permit from the Conservation Commission. Working with your consultant, uh, he or she will determine what the proper means and methods will be to restore the area and shore up the bank. And that's what you bring in front of us, and that's what we will, we will approve or not approve with conditions. So in other words, I can't tell you exactly, you know, this is, this is something between you and your consultant at this point to come back to us.
So, so basically with the consultant, we just have to figure out what needs to get removed and how to remove it and get, get that approved.
Yep, make a proposal. Yep, exactly.
So, so removing and, and then putting something else isn't required?
Uh, could be. Not sure yet.
Understood. Okay, other question I have is when I'm getting a consultant, what kind of license or qualification should they have, should they ask for?
Yeah, they should be, they, they, it should be an environmental consulting firm with wetlands consultants. Um, and there's a lot of them. Um, and again, I guess we, we can't give you any recommendations, but they should be pretty easy to find. If you also got on the website of the, what is it? It's the Massachusetts MAC. Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners or Commissions, M A C C. There's a lot of advertisements. You might even want to call them. Someone there might be able to help you. I think they, they might be able to make some recommendations.
What was that?
Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners or Commissions, and it's M A C C.
Okay.
Chair, Chair Parker, I'll just maybe add exactly in terms of having an environmental consulting firm. I think you're going to need probably both a wetland scientist and, and an engineer. So a firm, you know, that would have both to, because somebody's going to need to identify sort of all the resource areas and, and then somebody needs to have some expertise about bank restoration. Thanks.
Good point. Okay. Okay, Ali, um, so we will, there's the MAC website right there for you in the chat. Okay, so I think, uh, any other questions? Sounds like a no. Okay, uh, you know, again, you got some stern warning here from me. And hopefully, we're going to be working together as partners to get this situation rectified. So we'll be seeing you soon. Okay, Eleanor, what else do you have for admin updates?
The other admin update that we had is regarding an enforcement order that hasn't been sent out yet, but will likely be sent out tomorrow or Friday. It's located at two oh one to two fifty-nine Independence Drive in Chestnut Hill. And it's actually for a property that the commission had reviewed, a project board. They had come to the commission in December twenty nineteen with an RDA and the commission had issued a negative determination of applicability that filing and the, the negative determination are both in the drive folder for the commission's review. The work described in their filing is not what we're issuing the enforcement order for, as you probably imagine. On February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, commission staff was made aware of alleged clearing of vegetation within a wetlands resource area by DEP. They had received an anonymous complaint from people in the area. On February twenty-ninth, commission staff conducted a site visit and found significant areas of trees cleared to make way for a road and a parking lot, which appeared to be used by workers at an adjacent construction site. The thing that makes this kind of interesting is that the construction site is actually just over the border between Brookline and Boston. So the, the construction site itself is in Brookline and then this area where they're parking their cars and where a lot of construction material seems to be stored, or at least some dumpsters seem to be stored, is in Boston. So a lot of, and also to clarify, the construction area itself is outside of any wetland resource areas. Uh, so commission staff used aerial photos from July twenty twenty-two to compare the conditions of the site. And based on that, we believe that the tree, tree clearing happened sometime between July twenty twenty-two and February twenty twenty-four. Uh, a property survey would probably need to be done, but there is DCR-owned land that's just to the, I guess, yeah, probably to the south of that, not quite directly south, but to the south of the parcel that we're looking at. And we would also need to have a wetland delineation done to be sure, but it is possible that the work that was done and the tree clearing that was done is actually in the resource area itself, not just in the buffer. So this is, um, there's a pretty large system of bordering vegetated wetlands in this area. Uh, it's Hancock Woods also for reference. That's, um, that's the area that we were looking at. And there are photos that are included in the drive for the commission's review. I actually got a chance to go out there this morning again with Commissioner Herbst and just kind of went over the plans one more time and checked everything out. But it is a substantial area of trees that have been cleared and the work that they've done definitely goes beyond what was permitted by the commission. So, or rather, what received a negative determination. So we are planning to send out that enforcement order this week and we're hoping to come to the next hearing, so April third, with more information and a request for the commission to ratify the enforcement order. But I would love to take any questions that the commission might have. And if we don't know the answers to those questions now, we can certainly try to get the answers before the next hearing.
Yeah, on the surface, this is one of the most egregious.
It's significant.
Incursions that I've seen. Have you had any contact with the property owner at all?
I haven't had any contact yet, so, um, it'll be, yeah, I'm not quite sure what to expect.
And I don't see the enforcement order drafted in the drive, right? There is one in there?
No, we're, we're going to make some updates to it, and I'd be happy to share that out as well, uh, once, once we have it fully drafted. It was an oversight on, on my part. I, I hadn't seen the, um, the RDA originally. And, uh, yeah, the fact that they came to the commission, I think, kind of gives us more information because they know that the commission exists. So they knew enough to have some, some erosion controls, which also confused us initially. But, I mean, the fact that they had received a negative determination a few years ago explains that.
That's unbelievable. Okay, okay, looking forward to, I would like to take a look at the enforcement order before it goes out, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, yeah.
It has to strike a tone. This one really does need to strike a tone like this is serious. You know, um, and there are certain ways to do that, but I'd love to take a look at it. Wow, okay. Yeah, Commissioner Long, any questions on this?
Nothing for me. Thanks for looking at it, everybody.
Commissioner Conan?
Did the RDA say anything at all that would have given us any indication of this sort of, this extent of work?
No, it really, so the, um, what they had proposed in that was widening an existing path, which I have no doubt that they did. But they definitely went beyond that. It also, a lot of the work that they were proposing was in the buffer, but then the rest of it was out of the buffer and they've gone significantly further into the buffer. It's also a little bit unclear, to be honest, what, because there's, so basically, if, if you look at the photos, like there's a path, again, that was widened that, um, that they had come to the commission with, but then there's a second path that is just kind of closer to where the current wooded area begins. And it looks like it's not being used for anything right now, but along that path is where we saw some flags and we were out there and we just saw some erosion controls. But, I mean, really, the, I wouldn't say that there's anything in the filing that, that indicated that it would, um, yeah, there's nothing that really indicated that they were looking at doing anything like this.
So in other words, the fact that there was a negative determination wasn't in any way abused?
Right.
I would say, I would say no, I don't think that it was, and I think that it maybe builds the case because we thought initially that maybe they didn't realize that they needed to come to the Conservation Commission, but clearly. builds the case because we thought initially that maybe they didn't realize that they needed to come to the Conservation Commission, but clearly, somebody on the team knew enough to file um, for this initial work, and, and I feel like that actually makes a stronger case that they, they knew that this shouldn't have happened. And I mean, I guess regardless of whether they knew that or not, um, they, they definitely went beyond, beyond what the commission had reviewed.
Thank you.
Unbelievable. Okay, uh, Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Herbst, you saw the site. Um, am I fair in my assessment that this is pretty egregious?
It's pretty, I mean, it's interesting. Eleanor's done a great job sort of figuring it all out. I, 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 what it looks to me like is they actually very carefully followed what they said they were gonna do and then went further, um. You know, uh, quite a chunk further. I, Eleanor's right that we'll need to really get plans. I, I, my best guess is that they didn't actually go into the wetlands, but that they took down a lot of trees in the, in the buffer zone, but um, again, that's a guess, and, and you know, it's, it's, it's very close to where they're standing water, so it's not, it's not far off anyway. Um, and it, yeah, so um, I think it's Eleanor's sort of got it, got it all figured out, which was not a hundred percent evident on, at first look, so, thanks.
Right. Interesting. Okay, okay, Eleanor, looking forward to the uh, the enforcement order.
Absolutely, thank you. And yeah, if anybody has any other questions that come up or anything that comes to mind regarding this, that would, um, yeah, help us strengthen this case, just please feel free to reach out.
If we have a sense of the number of trees cut, that would be good to know.
No, I honestly, that's something that I think would be, would be interesting to look at. I, um, yeah, it's the, the aerial that we were looking at. I feel like it might be, we might be able to estimate a little bit based on kind of like trying to count sort of the centers of trees. Um, if we can kind of get a sense of that, but then again, the graphics on, on Google Earth aren't always the best, but um, it's, yeah, there's, let's see, so it, I would say that if we are looking at I'm just trying to think of what the best reference point is, um. If you're looking at the, so the, for example, like the screenshot, well, actually, that's not.
I was gonna say, if you had um, a previous uh, aerial and compared it to today's aerial, that might be helpful.
It's, yeah, so unfortunately, we don't have an updated aerial, which is, um, so really, the best that we can do is, that's why I included that screenshot of, of kind of the location of where we were standing, and then some photos of what we were seeing at that location. Um, and it's like this entire sort of corner um, of trees seems to have been removed.
Possibly, Eleanor, if you look at the uh, the overhead when, when it was winter, that earlier one, that might, might be easier to see trunks. I, I, I don't know how many trees it is. They're certainly quite mature. Um, it was that, that much is obvious.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you, Eleanor. Good job. Um, okay, next item on the agenda is uh, acceptance of the order of condition of, of, yeah, the order of conditions, of orders of conditions. Um, continued have been notice of intent for D E P, file number zero zero six one nine five eight in Boston, file number twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, and notice of intent for D E P, file number zero zero six one nine two eight in Boston, file number twenty twenty-three dash zero um, one eight. Last item on the agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and March sixth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, I took a look at them, made some minor edits. Great job, DeeDee. Um, do we have any questions from any of the commissioners? If not, do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and March sixth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Give a second. Great, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I voted aye. That carries five, nothing. Okay, last item on the agenda is a uh, motion to adjourn by acclamation, um.
Is this the fastest ever?
No, no.
It's gotta be close.
But it's close. It's close, thirty-six minutes. Uh, we've been under a half hour, but you know, it's a bell curve, you know.
We're out there on the tails. At a new picture, this is really cool. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, looks like from Charlestown, actually, my mistake.
It does, it does. I guess, I guess why that might be true.
I have no idea, but um, I'm liking it there. Okay, good night, everyone. Take care.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.